Call to order. The Dickinson City Commission meeting for Tuesday, August 17th, 2021. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. First item up is the Order of Business. Mr. Winningham, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Mr. President and Commissioners, there is one change to the order. We were adding for Item 5 Engineering, it'll be Item A. We're adding a Development Agreement for Stable Estates subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Winningham. Any questions for Mr. Winningham on the Order of Business? Now I'd look for a motion on the Order of Business.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman, second by Commissioner Soboluk. Any further discussion on the Order of Business? Hearing none, all in favor of the Order of Business as amended, state aye.
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 Pose same sign. Next item up is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items on the Consent Agenda Commissioners would like to discuss? Hearing no discussion, I'd look for a motion on the Consent Agenda.
I'll move to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion on the Consent Agenda? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Soboluk?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Move right into the agenda. First item up, Administration and Finance, is our monthly financial report. This will be handled by Count Maury. Welcome.
Thank you, President Deckard. So, starting with our Treasuries Report that we show you monthly, we're down about $500,000 in our unassigned cash compared to where we were in June of 2021. So, about $10.1 million, and we're projecting to end the year with our budget at about $7.5 million in our total unassigned cash. Then moving on to our Investments, you're going to see again, no major changes. We typically make all of our pension contributions at the beginning of the year. So, no major changes to these funds. We're still right around $40 million with our investments. And then moving on to our 1% Sales Tax Collection. So, this will look a little different than normal just because we have a three-year comparison on this slide now. The dark maroon line is '21, the red line is '20, and then blue is '2019. So, you can see, maroon kind of blends in with the red because it's on an almost identical trend to where we were in 2020. So, we are actually, so, we are up about $181,000 from July of '21 compared to July of '19. So, about a 43% increase there. First seven months total, we saw are down $116,000 compared to the first seven months of 2019. And then I should mention too, the reason we're going off 2019 is just to give us a more accurate comparison, just because of the unpredictability of 2020. And then this slide here is exactly half of the previous slide. And then we'll move on to our Hospitality Tax. So, again, the blue line being 2019 and that darker maroon line being 2021, we're up about $26,000 in our Hospitality Tax compared to July of 2019. So, about a 37% increase there. Through the first seven months, we're down about $60,000 altogether. So, about 11% decrease in our Hospitality Tax compared to 2019. And then moving on to our Occupancy Tax. So, that maroon line is actually splitting the difference in '21 compared to where we were in '19 and also in '20. So, we're at about a $26,000 increase compared to where we were in July of 2019. So, about a, excuse me, it's about a 29%. We're down $10,000 compared to the blue line in 2019, about a 29% decrease. And then in the first seven months total in our Occupancy Tax, we're down about $61,000 altogether, which is about a 35% decrease. And then moving on to our Oil Impact Funds, you can see a lot better comparison going off of what 2019 was. 2021, we're down about $75,000 compared to where we were in 2019. First seven months altogether, we're down about $513,000 total, about a 6.7% decrease. And then moving on to our Expenses and Revenue. So, our benchmark through seven months would be 58.3%. Our general fund expenses were at 55.19. So, we are under budget currently at this point in the year. And then you can see on the chart on the right, the green is what we've collected. And we've collected 66% of our projected revenue so far. So, we are ahead of where we are projected to be. A big part of that is property taxes are coming in more heavy towards the beginning of the year, so that, I'm assuming we'll see even out quite a bit as we get towards the end of this year. And then this last slide here is for our Enterprise Funds. So, again, the 58.3% benchmark. The red part of the circle on the left shows that we're 48% expended through seven months. And then on the right side, you can see we're ahead of our projections. We're at 61% collected in our Enterprise Fund revenue. So, with that, I'll do my best answer any questions, and city staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Maury? Now I'd look for a motion on the monthly financial report.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman, second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions, city staff? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Soboluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item up is our Public Safety Training Center Design. That will be handled by City Administrator Winningham.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. What you have on the agenda before you is a request to fund a preliminary study and design of what we're calling the Public Safety Training Center. The proposal was sought after with multiple architecture that had the experience that would provide the best training facility design, that had the background and specialized experience. And so, before you is a request for up to $30,000 to pay for a initial design, so that we have something on paper that we can go forward and do the rest of the process to potentially have started a project that would be then become a training and public safety site for the City of Dickinson. This also could potentially become a regional hub for training, also training for citizens to do certain types of training, but it would benefit the surrounding communities as well. The bill pair for that would be, as we've looked for where that funding would come from, it'd make sense to put that into what was CARES Act dollars or dollars that we received for this type of public safety training. And that's what we would intend to use.
Thank you, Mr. Winningham. Any questions for Mr. Winningham on this proposal?
Looking on here, Mr. Winningham, I guess I was, what I anticipated when they would, I guess, first contact with the City Commission or the engagement timeframe, I guess. I saw that kickoff meeting, they proposed any time to anyone? We didn't have a time schedule until we came before this body to get an approval. But I think they were responsive in the last video teleconference when we met multiple day agencies. But I think unless, Chief Dossinger, do you have any other?
Mayor Deckard, no. We were waiting to see the decision made by this board, and then I will be contacting them.
Okay. I was just thinking, maybe they said after, if we approved it, what they were looking at, a couple of weeks, a month, you know?
So. What's the potential budgetary impact of just the study here?
30,000, not exceed 30,000. That was the general schedule that they submitted to us. That would just give us the start points to then take a master plan and review it with the rest of the comprehensive plan for the city.
That would be like raw drawings and things like that, or?
The deliverables are, you know, design concepts. It also is some presentations and reports back to the commission. That would give us the, you know, their base fee was a $16,000 sum, but then there was a few other fees that we wanted to consider so that they can come forward and at least give us the full body of presentations.
And I think that part of this is there is a cost to this. They go through the analysis and they break it down, if we could phase it or, you know, just look at the different options.
So, 3.5 here, it says bringing it all together, pro forma analysis if requested. Is that additional a cost? Because, I mean, that'd be valuable.
So, they're part of their wheelhouse for Leo Daley, included several other training centers throughout the country. It was part of the appetite for why we wanted to choose them. Additionally, they had already done campaign plans, marketing plans, that would allow us to then seek other grant funding, that we could find other money within the federal side, potentially state, that would allow us to pay for a facility like this. Because we definitely would go out and seek other partnerships prior to just thinking we were going to be able to do this as a city.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
Are there any other questions, comments?
Also, a big portion of this would be the programming of this facility, which is big.
I'd move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Soboluk. Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mrs. Soboluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Our next item up is the Grant Application for Able Incorporated, and this will be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Deckard and Commissioners. Before you, in your packet, you have a final pre-application, but due to the application now changing from the last one, they do request a resolution and everything in the pre-application of their grant. And I do have two members that are here to speak about the T-Rex Mall and what's going on there. But what the resolution and the pre-application of this grant is to continue the projects that are addressing the accessibility concerns that they have at the T-Rex. There was a nice memo that was put into your packet. But other than that, I'd have Mike Klein and Connie Kralik come forward, oh, sorry, come forward and speak a little bit about the T-Rex and some of the things that are coming about, and then I'd be looking for approval of the resolution.
Go ahead, Mike. You're under the mic.
Well, hello. As you said, I'm Mike, and this is Connie. We're here with Able Incorporated. And if you guys drove by the T-Rex Mall, you notice we're currently giving it a brand-new facelift to be completed November of 2021. So, since we bought the mall, we did do the roof repair in July of 2020. We did pave the west side, the back side of the mall. That was completed in November of 2020. So, we got rid of all those divots and mud every time it rained, made it into a nice parking lot. In 2020, we were awarded a CDBG grant to provide two universal adult changing stations. One would be designated for public use for the community. Bids are, they closed today, they'll be open tomorrow, and construction of that will start shortly, and we are planning to complete that by the end of 2021. So, I'm here today to talk about the 2021 CDBG request. It has changed a little bit since, you know, it went into your packets. But our request is for $215,900 with a match of $53,825, which would be provided by Able Incorporated. So, since purchasing the former T-Rex Mall in December of 2019, and we can certainly answer any questions on why we did that, but I think most of you already know to save time, we'll just move through and say, we continue to improve this property. Priority for this property is making sure that the property is accessible for low-income, intellectually disabled persons working there, and some also have physical limitations. These improvements would also benefit the general public. So, the scope and purpose of this project, overall, this project addresses priority with accessibility concerns, and analysis of all accessibility barriers is ongoing as we observe people struggling with current situations. Some of these barriers have been removed to date. What remains in our current understanding of barriers that need to be addressed, so in this grant, we would remove and replace concrete sidewalk in front of the east entrance on the South Edition. The concrete is uneven, cracked, heaving, and creating a trip hazard. We have had one incident where a visitor to the mall has tripped and fallen in this entrance. We also plan on improving the maneuverability of persons in wheelchairs with caretakers. At the main entrance, the space in between the exterior and interior of the doors of the vestibule is too narrow for a person in a wheelchair with a caregiver to maneuver with the doors open. The interior of the vestibule glass wall with doors would be removed and rebuilt further into the mall, allowing more room in the vestibule itself, removing architectural barriers of the door closing too close to move through. We would replace the interior and exterior doors in the south section of the building with sliding doors, installation of sliding doors in the south exterior and the north, the new thrift store interior door entrance. The sliding doors would eliminate the needs for automatic door openers and eliminate door swings. This removes all architectural barriers for the workers and the mall visitors to more easily move in and out of the space. This is especially important as these entrances will be used for moving goods by persons with disabilities working at the thrift store. Workers and the general public will also benefit from removing these architectural barriers. And finally, we have the installation of automatic door openers. We'll have six exterior tenant door openers, two exterior able store doors, and three interior able store doors, which includes Decades, Kid Thrift, and our Washington Laundromat. The door openers will remove architectural barriers at each of these locations. So, that's what our grant request would be used to. We're continuing to go above and beyond ADA requirements to create an attractive building in a very visible part of Dickinson.
All right, thank you. And we have helped as the governing agency on multiple grants for different projects for Able, so this is pretty much the standard pass-through.
Yes, we've been, as the city, the legal entity, the municipality, for the pass-through of the grants for them.
So, we just need to approve this, and then that goes on to the state agency that approves this, and we don't actually pay this money, we're just approving for them to be qualified from our community for this grant money.
Right. The resolution states that the city acknowledges that they are using our municipality as a pass-through for their state funding. This is, like I said, the preliminary of their grant, and then upon their approval of their grant, then they will go forward. We will have more forms to sign that says that they've been approved and you still want to do this. So, that's what it is. But this is the preliminary of it, so, and I think, and staff recommends that we approve the resolution.
Okay, this is Resolution 25-2021?
Correct. I'd move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Soboluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Soboluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item up, we have a Chapter 4 Amendment. City Administrator Winningham and City Attorney Winko will be handling this.
I'll let the city attorney do this resolution, or ordinance rather.
Mr. President, Commissioners, in front of you, you'll see the new ordinance that identifies specifically the changes that we recently have seen in the North Dakota Century Code regarding the ability to sell alcohol on Sundays. Currently, the code as currently incorporated within the Dickinson Municipal Code provides that an establishment cannot sell alcohol before 11:00 a.m. With the new state laws coming out of the state legislature, that has been changed statewide to 8:00 a.m. And so, this ordinance is simply a reflection of that new ordinance change, or excuse me, new legislative change at the state level. City staff recommend approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Winko. And this is the first reading of 1725?
Correct.
Are there any questions for city staff on this ordinance?
Mr. President?
Mr. Oderman?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Soboluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Our next item up is a report, our monthly resources report by HR Coordinator Nomenek.
Mr. President, we do have a 4:45 timetable.
Oh, we did, okay. Sorry, I'm so used to the 5 o'clock. All right. Well, we have some officers waiting here for, all right, thank you, Chief Dossinger.
Good evening, Mr. President, Members of the Commission. At this time, I'd like to introduce the two newest officers of the City of Dickinson to the commission and to the community. They would step forward, please. Officer Abby Johnson and Officer Jacob Kittleson. Officer Abby Johnson was born and initially raised in Alaska until her family moved to South Dakota. She completed her education in Rapid City and earned her high school diploma from Rapid City Central High School. Abby moved on to attend North Dakota State College of Science in Wapentin, North Dakota, where she earned an associate's degree. Following her graduation, she enrolled at Dickinson State University, earning a bachelor's degree in composite social science with the criminal justice track. Abby recently completed internship through DSU at the Dickinson Police Department prior to her current employment as an officer. Officer Jacob Kittleson was born and raised in California. He spent numerous vacations in western North Dakota while growing up due to family residing in this area. Jacob graduated high school from Cypress High School in California. He continued his education at California State University Dominguez Hill, where he earned a bachelor's degree in majoring in psychology and minoring in criminal justice administration. At this time, I'd like to invite the City Administrator Winningham down to swear them in officially.
This is the fun stuff. I don't know if I should stand with my back facing the commission, so I'll stand here. So, oaths of office, they're no small thing. They are considered solemn promises. Solemn promises, what does that mean? I did have to look it up, but we, I took an oath, just like the commissioners take an oath. The solemn promise really is that you're willing to do this job when nobody's watching, and it could include giving your life. That's what solemn promises are all about. These oaths are no different. So, that being said, I'll set this one down for a second. I'll start with Mr. Kittleson. You'll just say your name and repeat after me. Aye?
Aye. Jacob Kittleson.
Will support, obey, and defend?
Will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The state of North Dakota.
The state of North Dakota.
And the city of Dickinson.
And the city of Dickinson.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And that I will strive always.
And will strive always.
To meet the highest ethical implicit standards.
Strive to meet the highest.
Highest ethical implicit standards.
Highest ethical implicit standards.
In my employment.
In my employment.
And in furtherance.
And in furtherance.
Of the best public interest.
Of the best public interest.
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 That's it. Congratulations. And I'll sign this. This is my first time, by the way, of doing these oaths. Normally, it's the mayor. So, thank you, Chief Dossinger, for allowing me to do this. So, I'll sign a copy for you right here, and this is the official one. I'm not sure which one, chief, you want to take, but you probably have to put this as his official record. Congratulations, Jacob. Officer Kittleson. I don't know why I'm nervous. I won't be now, be practicing this. Abby, are you ready for this?
Yes.
Okay. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I have a good question.
Will support, obey, and defend?
Will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The state of North Dakota.
The state of North Dakota.
And the city of Dickinson.
And the city of Dickinson.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And that I will strive always to meet.
And I will strive always to meet.
The highest ethical standards.
The highest ethical standards.
Implicit in my employment.
Implicit in my employment.
In furtherance.
In furtherance.
Of the best public interest.
Of the best public interest.
Congratulations.
Hello. I just started a few weeks ago. I've had a lot of fun, and I've learned so much already. I'm excited for a lot more opportunity to learn about Dickinson and the community. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for serving.
I just want to thank everyone here for allowing me to hold this position, and I'll do my best to fulfill the position. Thank you.
Thank you for serving.
Chief, these two must already be really popular, because you got a lot of officers in the House.
Very popular. Unless there's something on the agenda I'm not aware of later.
There might be some beers being bought or something, somebody's waiting. Okay, we also have a 5 o'clock timetable, and Mr. Winningham, you have a announcement of a, President, a gift to the City of Dickinson, the Marathon.
Mr. President and Commissioners, so this evening, what we are intending to do is not only with a press release, but we want to do this in the public forum, and I'm not, I didn't see Mike Higgins here.
He's back over there.
Yeah, they're back in the back. Oh, they're in the back. Oh, here's our, I'll stand up then. Just wanted to say a public thank you. A number of months ago, probably back in the February timeframe, leading up to our discussions with the town square, I was approached by Marathon Petroleum for a grant opportunity. Marathon has participated in other grants with our city, but this seemed like a really good fit because we were looking for those that good fit, because we were looking for those that would really need to support our community with the town square. Marathon Petroleum is one of those good news stories for the city of Dickinson, as we have, over the number of years, built capacity within our city to provide infrastructure for industrial use. One of those industrial use was a former refinery that eventually sold their entire refinery grounds to Marathon Petroleum. That Marathon Petroleum's come in and really quite an innovative company, doing renewable diesel. And that renewable diesel allows them to sell these... this product to places like California that are willing to pay a lot of money that comes right back to our house here in renewable diesel. Additionally, we benefit greatly, because we've built out infrastructure that allows the city to receive about $1 million in revenue every year from our sale of renewable, our reused water, and our sewer. And so, we think it's a great partnership for them to also come to our community and say, "We'd also like to invest with a grant." And so, we are thankful for a grant of $200,000 that will help us to continue our project with the town square. That town square will... the intent is to be a vibrant part of our community. And so, then Marathon, already as about 100 employees, and Mike, I might get that wrong, but about 100 employees, about 100 families, that essentially live within our city, many of the contractors, many of the local people, that they live here within our city, and so, you know, it's our obligation to take care of our citizens. And this shows a great support for Marathon to come forward and provide $200,000 from the Marathon Petroleum Foundation. And just wanted to publicly say thank you to Marathon and to all your employees that work so hard to make what I think is a company that supports our town. Thank you so much.
Marathon individuals, did you have any comments, or...
I didn't prepare anything, sorry.
That's okay.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I'd already... I think I told Mr. Graham Pickering, he's from Marathon, I said, "You probably won't have to say anything."
So, thank you. Mr. President, Commissioners, thanks again. We look forward to future opportunities with Dickinson, partnering with the community and being in the community. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we'll go back to HR. Sorry about that.
Public comments?
Yeah, we got three minutes. I guess we can go into public comments. It's for 5:05, but we can...
Nominak can get it done in three minutes.
Do it in three minutes, Mrs. Nominak?
I'll give it a try.
All right. Let's have at it.
Thank you, President Decker, Commissioners. Top of the list, we still have the utilities manager on there. We're still not ready to open that position, still working on some other things internally in the department. We've had some water reclamation facility operators that have proved to be a little bit difficult to fill. We have two positions open, one in the background phase right now. A solid waste recycling operator, looks like we have one person in the background. Actually, I think an offer was just made on that one. So, we'll be getting that one filled and going soon. Communication specialist has been a really difficult one for us again. If you remember, a while back, it seemed like there was probably five years or so where we just never could keep that department fully staffed. And we're kind of at that point right now where it's really been difficult for us. And I don't know, Chief Dossinger, Chief President, if you have anything to add to your issues with that position.
I do. Thank you, Mrs. Nominak. You know, being a dispatcher at a public safety answering point like a regional center like Dickinson, it's a very stressful job. They work shift work. It's a... obviously, it's very stressful. And it's something that you can't really prepare somebody for. You don't go to college to become a dispatcher. It's kind of a calling, and kind of we're seeing some of the same difficulties in attracting young individuals to become police officers in our country. We're also seeing it in the dispatch side of things. And I'll kind of touch on it a little bit in my report, but we do currently have three openings in our dispatch center right now. And keep in mind, that is a 24/7 operation. They dispatch not only for the police department, but also for the Dickinson Fire Department and regional fire departments, and for the ambulance services in our area. So, if there's a crisis that occurs in western North Dakota, more than likely, it's going to run through our dispatch center, or they're going to answer the phone if it's a 911 call in our region, so.
And we had a patrol sergeant position that was just filled internally with Sergeant Michael Hanson. Corporal police officer, we're in the middle of that, trying to fill his position now with a corporal. So, there will be a promotional internal position there. We have two police officer openings, and they are currently in the background phase. Animal control officer, we did get that one filled, and she has started her job and is currently working. Street maintenance operator, it just shows that we've just hired someone, but we've, again, gotten resignation. So, that will be opened again if it hasn't already been opened. So, again, our operator positions still are difficult for us to fill as well. Scale services representative, we just filled that position, and I just went out and saw her today. She's doing very well. The seasonal tree data collection, that's been on here a while. We did get the grant. We are... do have that open now and are attempting to fill that position. And I'm here for any questions, if you have anything.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Nominak. Any questions for Mrs. Nominak?
Thank you.
Thank you. It is time now for the public comments, not on the agenda. If there is anything the public wishes to speak to, or not on the agenda this evening, please come forward, state your name, and let us know if you have any issues or questions for the city commission. And if you're watching online, you can call in at area code 701-456-7006.
The conference is currently empty. You will hear silence or music on hold when connected.
Again, if anyone has any public comments, not on the agenda this evening, please come forward, state your name, and let us know your concerns, or if you have any questions for the city commission. Now would be your time. Anyone have any public comments? If you're watching, again, online, 701-456-7006. Any items that were not on the agenda this evening, or if you have questions for the Seeing no one has any comments or questions for the city commission, I will close the We will move into public safety, and Chief Dossinger, you have a monthly report for the police department.
I do. Corey, is that it? Divide monthly reports to the police department?
In July, we responded to 2,720 calls for service. In 2021, July has been the busiest month for us as far as activity and responding to calls. The closest month to that was April of this year. The top five calls for service for the month of July, we responded to 145 suspicious persons' vehicle calls, 105 speak with an officer calls, and 89 firework calls, 82 welfare checks, and 60 warrants services. We did respond to 58 total accidents for the month. Unfortunately, there was one fatality, four injury accidents, 13 hit-and-run, and 40 property For the month of July, we conducted 557 traffic stops. There were 138 citations issued and 320 warnings issued. The top three cited traffic violations for the month of July was speeding, followed by driving without liability insurance, and failure to register a motor vehicle. Behavioral health, that remains a huge concern for us and a big part of what we do every day. We responded to 102 behavioral health calls, 82 of those are welfare checks, nine mental health-related calls, six intoxicated subject calls, and five suicide threats. Our criminal investigative unit came into the month of July with 67 cases. In July, they conducted 10 digital forensic extractions. They conducted a sex offender operation. They did assist other agencies in our area, such as the Dunn County Sheriff's Department as well. We did two suspicious persons' vehicle activity calls that they assisted on. They investigated two thefts and frauds and assisted in six search warrants. Right now, they have 59 open investigations. They did have two call-outs after hours, one for a possible vehicle arson and for a sexual assault investigation. In the month of July, they also did conduct a 42 face-to-face sex offender checks. When we conduct this, we make sure that we meet with these individuals face-to-face. We verify their address and other information that they need to provide as far as registering as a sex offender in our community. We did find that two were in violation, and they were referred to charge for charges. There were a total of 116 criminal arrests in the month of July, the most popular were warrant service, followed by drug-related arrests and DUI arrests. July monthly training, some of the training that we conducted in July, one detective did conduct 12 hours of training as for doing background investigations. We did have our dispatch supervisor attend a national conference in Ohio for 40 hours related... that was conducted by the National Emergency Number Association, and that was paid for by the Stark County. We did have 16 hours of social media criminal drug investigations training, which we hosted at the PSC. And one nice thing, we do host training in our community. We are able to send more officers and staff to that. We were able to send five detectives and our intelligence analysts to that training. Dispatch also did see a busy month for the month of July. They answered 1,057 911 calls, 5,844 non-emergency calls, and 1,505 outbound calls. And as we touched on earlier, staffing was tough for the month of July for us. We did basically run the month of July with 11 full-time dispatchers. One of those was in training, and we do have... currently have three positions open in dispatch center. Animal shelter, they did respond to 77 running at-large animal calls. So, they were fairly active for the month of July. And usually during the summertime, where animal-related calls do pick up. They did impound 32 dogs, 36 cats, for a total impound of 68 animals, and 23 of those remain at the shelter at this time. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Chief Dossinger. Any questions for Chief Dossinger on his monthly report?
Mr. President.
Commissioner Oderman?
Chief, one question, one comment. I gotta find my question. I gotta scroll back here and see what it was. The 10 digital forensic extractions, can you explain what that is?
A digital forensic extraction, it could be an extraction from a cellphone or from a personal computer. Usually, as part of an investigation, we obtain a search warrant either to extract basically digital evidence from a computer or a cellphone, which is a big part of what we do in law enforcement. A lot of information gets input into cellphones every day, including where you're at and what you do. So, a big part of doing thorough investigations is making sure we get as much information as we can, and that usually involves obtaining a search warrant and extracting evidence from cellphones.
Okay. All right. And then, the comment was, I think this is maybe going to be in your August report, but I just wanted to commend your staff for the... you guys conducted a training for the... all the teachers at Trinity?
Yes, we did.
And they just raved about how helpful that was and how great it was.
So, thank you.
Yeah. So, maybe you can just kind of update everybody on what you guys did.
Certainly. So, every year, you know, before school starts, we always try to... our SROs do an excellent job in the public school system. Currently, Dickinson Catholic Schools does not have a school resource officer assigned to them, so we always extend invitations for them to come, and so we can provide some training, such as, you know, what to look for for signs for drug usage, alcohol usage. Even goes to, we do some of our ALIS training as well, as far as what do you... how do you respond to certain types of threats? There's a variety of topics that we're able to present to the school officials, staff, and administration, and they took advantage of it. So, we are very welcome to host them that day.
You guys are doing an ALIS training here at the hospital in the next week or so, too.
Correct.
So, thank you for everything you're doing.
Any other comments? Thank you, Chief Dossinger. Moving to engineering? We have a development agreement for the stable estate subdivision.
President Decker, Commissioners, on your hiosks are a paper copy of a development agreement for stable estates. Last month, it came before you, the final plat and some other agreements for this subdivision, which lies south of State Avenue and west from Camp on the Heart, if that helps with your location. This is outside city limits, so this development agreement is very basic, I guess, compared to other ones that we've brought forward. We really don't have a lot involved with this development, because it is in the county, but we thought it was important to capture a few items, like how their proposed roadway will connect in with State Avenue, stormwater runoff into that right-of-way along State Avenue, and then floodplain issues. And that's what's contained in this agreement. And we thought that we would like to move forward with it and added it on this evening with the short agenda. I know you haven't had a lot of time to look at this item, but there's been quite a few other discussions about this subdivision, so we wanted to bring it forward. Do you have questions for me on this item?
Didn't we typically take these through planning and zoning first?
I don't think so. Not the development agreement. The plats, the plumes, the other agreements have come forward.
Pretty sure we have in the past.
Have brought forward the development agreement for review.
The ones from the ETZ?
Anything that had any development?
I'm trying to remember. I'm trying to look through here.
We haven't had one for a long time.
Right.
Right. And I know that there's been some changes and who's brought them forward. It hasn't always been engineering. The last couple that have come forward have been from engineering because of the components with utility projects.
Maybe Walter will remember. Maybe I'm wrong.
I'm just trying to look through here while Walter's coming up, Mr. Hadley. I'm just looking through here if there's any... I guess I didn't... we have that water line that runs underneath this development?
Correct.
That we make sure that there's protections built in?
That was taken care of along with the plat. So, part of this process is kind of drug-out, because that was a key element that we were holding on to. We wanted to make sure that that line was located properly and that the easement is situated over top of that line. And that was taken care of in the final plat last month. So, this... just because it's a county piece, this development agreement is pretty simplified compared to others that we bring forward.
Mr. Hadley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, Mr. Frederick, the development agreements have been done both ways. For the longest time, we brought them after the final plat, just to make sure that the conditions weren't changed by the commission for the development agreement. So, that's when they started transitioning into after the final plat goes before you. And as Ms. Moschek said, there were a number of conditions on the water line and whatnot. There were plat conditions that aren't really valid, I guess, in this particular application to put it in. to put in a development agreement, because we're not, we're not obtaining any surety that those are going to be finished, we know that the easement's where it needs to be.
Okay. My concern is that, you know, everything, they have clarity that where they're to build in and leave our line alone, so they...
So, Mr. President and Commissioner, the intent, and I've asked to put this on the agenda because I have watched the process for so long, and essentially, the developers have been waiting for us to agree after they do their part, which was, we went out and surveyed the line, the easement, and to get into the weeds here, the easement wasn't actually correct, it wasn't identifying that primary line, that conduit, and so we had to go back and forth with some better indicators on the plat, and that was all accomplished. And then they provided this agreement yesterday, and I don't want the city to be the one that's slowing anything down, and I think we're in good stead at this point with this agreement.
As long as everybody knows where the line's at, we're not getting...
Mr. President, would you prefer, if we can, to bring those with the final plat?
I mean, that would be...
We surely can.
I mean, that would be a decision to, I guess, bring up maybe tomorrow morning at planning and zoning, or, but I'm comfortable with it, you know, coming here, but, I don't know, Commissioner Frederick, do you feel it should be with the final plat?
I mean, I'm trying to look back here, but I always thought that we reviewed those before they were...
I'm trying to think of which the last development agreement had, wasn't that with the Cooks addition?
We have a few pending ones that haven't come through for...
But I'm saying, the last one that we've approved is...
Probably Cook's fifth, yeah.
Like Cooks.
Oh, the market would have been recent.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, the market, okay. I mean, it all ultimately comes to us anyways. Right.
And again, the market had some unique utility items with it, and so that was more driven by engineering, but I know in the past, they might have been brought forward by the city attorney or planning, but we can sure talk about it tomorrow morning if you want to give us some direction that you'd like to see them together at P&amp;Z with the final plat.
I'm comfortable tonight moving forward with this one.
Yeah, this one's, there's really nothing drastic in here.
No, it's pretty simplified compared to other ones you've seen.
This is close to development that's going to be in the county to the city, is it going to get, so. But any other questions for Mrs. Marshick, or Mr. Hadley, or any of city staff that are present?
I do have one, just underneath the recitals, it says, "Whereas the owner is the fee owner of the subject property located in the city of Dickinson," is that an accurate statement, since it's actually in the ETZ?
It should state ETZ, I believe.
We can change that.
Well, amend it, amend it before we sign it.
Good catch.
Yes, good catch, Commissioner Sobeluk.
I think Ms. Marshick, you have the original word version of the agreement, correct?
We do, we'll get it taken care of.
Thank you.
I would move to approve pending those changes.
Second. We have a motion to approve pending the amendment by Commissioner Oderman, second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are through public comments. Commissioners, at this time, as Commission, you've been, City Attorney Wanko was able to send out a negotiated contract to everyone, if there is agreement with what's in there, we can forego the executive session, but if anyone wants to go to executive, we'll first have Commission comments and then move, but, so, first we'll go with, are there any thing that Commission wants to talk about that wasn't on the agenda this evening? Hearing there, go ahead.
Mr. President, it may behoove us to discuss what many of us saw in the paper today, and my understanding is that the city has the same limitations set on it as a landlord has set on them in terms of...
Commissioner Oderman, why don't you clarify what's in the paper?
So, there was a property owner, who, there was a story in the paper today about, with the, with the moratorium on, what is the wording?
Eviction.
Eviction, yeah, the eviction moratorium, that has a tenant that hasn't paid their rent in over a year, also has not paid their utilities, and the city isn't turning off their utilities, I would imagine that's because we have the same limitations set on us by this moratorium. I just, I think it's important for us to clarify this stuff for the people that are reading this in the paper and thinking that the city is being irresponsible to this property owner.
Commissioner Oderman, I'll take a swing at it. So, there was a news article that had a number of inaccuracies, I could either spend some time and go by each inaccuracy, but that's the nature of news, you take it for what it's worth. So, some of the items you're talking about is, we are in compliance with our municipal code, and if it's a civil matter that involves a tenant or landlord dispute, we are typically not involved in that unless we have to respond for public safety, and in that, in this case, we do have a police report, there was a responder that went out to residents and spoke to the individual that was, that had spoke to the newspaper, and some of the things that were talked about, as far as I'm concerned in the city, they're inaccurate. We, to this point, for the city, have produced approximately 1,033 letters that went out to citizens that say they have to take care of their weeds and other items within their yard, so that's normal for the city. There are some citizens that will contend about that, and they won't comply until the last day, and they save some money by doing that, and we follow up. In this particular case within the newspaper, I'll just speak to, we are complying with everything the city can to ensure that residents are safe, the tenants are safe, landlords are safe, but our hands are also tied when it comes to the federal government saying that there's a moratorium. What I would say to a citizen that is questioning this is, contact your attorney, it's a civil matter amongst landlord and tenant, I would also not be an attorney and advise him anything, but I would say, as a good citizen, I would say, don't take matters into your own hands and try to do what the state of North Dakota calls self-help remedy, but do that through the courts, and hopefully they'll be able to find some justice when the Supreme Court or others decide that this is an overstep by the federal government, but they're, we're bound by the same laws, and it's tough when I know that there's a landlord out there who is bearing the cost of these, of the people willing to not pay rent, and so I think that's all I'll talk about.
No, and I appreciate that, I just thought it was important for us to correct the record there, because I know that we've done what we can, so, thank you.
Any other comments, Commissioners, on items not on the agenda? Now I'll close the Commission section. The discussion on city administrator's contract, if a Commissioner wishes to, we will move to executive session if there are any items within this contract with Mr. Winningham they wish to discuss. I'll make that motion, I guess.
To move to executive?
Okay. So, under contract negotiations, executive session, under North Dakota Century Code 44-04-19.1 and 44-04-19.2, we have a motion to move to executive session by Commissioner Frederick. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Commissioner Sobeluk. All in favor, state aye.
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 We'll be moving to executive session. Executive session, discussion about city administrator's contract, and if there are no further questions, I'd look for a motion on Mr. Winningham's contract.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the new contract with Mr. Winningham by Commissioner Walla, second by Commissioner Oderman. Any discussion?
It was a hard decision, just kidding.
Not all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a new contract, you're tied to us till the end of 2024.
Or longer.
Or longer. I will keep the box ready at all times.
No.
In the event that we have to evacuate.
We'll just have Rita keep it.
I will just assure you that it will never be a scene like it is right now in Kabul, you'll never see that happen here.
Good.
As long as I'm around.
Well, we'll make sure that it's not a cardboard box, and we'll give you a nice plastic note, pretty, with wheels.
Motion adjourned. Second, all favor, merge adjourned.
Aye.